Licensing Commission, open at 7 o'clock PM. Roll call, Member Fallen Wyder?
Present.
Member McClintock?
Present.
Member Primo?
Present.
Member Rowland? Member Ravindran?
Present.
We have quorum. I will accept nominations for Chair.
I'd like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Member Ravindran as our Chair.
Do you accept that nomination?
I'm waiting. No, yes.
We're not to the second yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, now someone needs to make a motion. Any other nominations? Hold on. Hold, hold please. Any other nominations? Okay. Now I'll need a motion.
I move, I have to move, alright.
You have to use my monstrosities.
Yeah. I move the election of Member Ravindran as our Chair. Is that right? Is that a proper motion?
Second.
Was that Primo?
Yes.
And now we'll use thumbs up to vote. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
You can vote for yourself, come on.
Yes, you can. Please vote. Four in favor, the motion carries. Congratulations, Chair Ravindran.
I'd like to make a motion for Vice Chair.
Oh, hold on, I have to announce it. I'm now accepting nominations for Vice Chair.
When you guys, when you, alright. I would like to nominate McClintock. Chair, Member McClintock as our Vice Chair.
Do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
And now I'll need a motion.
I make a motion that Member-
Wait, sorry.
Gosh.
I jumped. Any other nominations? Okay, now make your motion.
Alright. I make a motion that Member McClintock is Vice Chair of the Licensing Commission.
Second.
And please vote, thumbs up, thumbs down? Four in favor, the motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chair McClintock. And at this point, I adjourn the transitional meeting at 7:02 and we will take a five-minute break. Chair Ravindran? Vice Chair McClintock?
Present.
Member Fallen Wyder?
Here.
Member Primo?
Present.
Member Rowland. Chair, we have quorum. I don't think your mic's on. This button? Oh, excellent! Great. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes? Or the agenda, let's start with the agenda first, apologies. Any changes to the agenda? If no changes, I guess we can approve the agenda? And minutes? Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Sorry, who seconded?
I did.
I did.
Thank you. If you wish to address the authority under public comment, please sign in if you haven't already. I think Wendy might have it in her hand. Please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order for the meeting. I guess we've done that. Excellent. Thank you. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The authority is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The Chair may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information and report back as appropriate. I believe I have one person on the public comment list. Does anyone else like to add their name to the list? Okay. And Pam? I believe that's you.
Yeah, that's me, Pam Chadbourne, I have a block and a half from here and I think you are now Licensing Committee, so welcome, although I'm not sure there's many new faces this time. But thanks for serving and thanks for volunteering on this really important group who are necessary, I think, for our city's safety and conduct. It's an important function and I thank you for showing up volunteering to do it. I did want to express a couple concerns. And one is that the training was apparently not for the public. And I want to let you know as fellow citizens, fellow residents of the city and ones who are engaged, involved in serving the city, that why should the city hide the training from the public? It is better for us to understand what you do and what you're required to do, what you do to accommodate in your lives this service. And so, I'm against what the city has done for the past three years, which is secrete and hide the training from the public, that's wrong. Before that, for years, we did it, we had training in public and the public was able to see what you do. That's good both ways, I think. I cannot see a good reason not to do it. And so I'm going to complain that that training was not public. Second, I don't like that your names are not on the dais and that they're not on the screen. We should be able, the people in the room should be able to see who you are. And you should be proud of that, that we can see your names and recognize you. And this is a problem that has occurred and recurred over and over for years. I do not think it's respectful to the public or to you. And so I am going to complain about that. If respect is required of the public, the same is required to the public. It's the same issue as having the training in public. So, yeah, where are your names? We need to see those both ways. And they're not available to us, it's wrong. So I'm going to complain about that. And then the issue with the mics, I mean, this is the second meeting this week where the mics were hard to handle. Why is this? We used federal money to redo this room. And you should be served by mics that work! I'm very frustrated by the quote-quote "little things" that add up to not being easy to run these meetings. Little things that build up into obstacles in the communication. So, thanks for listening to me complain about these things. And to the degree that you can put a voice in, I'd like you to consider and think about, you know, public service and why public is better served by what I suggested, thank you.
Anyone else? Think we are ready to move on to the, is there any general business? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. And this is LC Resolution 02-2024, approving a liquor license application for Littleton Brewing Company, LLC, DBA Littleton Brewing Company located at 1201 West Littleton Boulevard, Littleton, Colorado, 80120. Are the applicants present? Thank you. I am going to ask you to join us and present, is that accurate? I could-
You have the swearing and chief-
If you guys both want to raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful? Thank you.
So I've never done this before, so I don't know if you guys ask me questions or if I just talk.
Why don't we begin by, why don't you just present your-
Okay, perfect, yep.
Your application.
My name is Troy Beer and I'm one of the owners with, alongside my father, of Littleton Brewing Company, which is the building being built on Littleton Boulevard, you may or may not have seen it. It's been a long time in the making. Put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it. It's been a passion project of ours for a long time. We're not some big company, we're just a father and son team that want to build a beautiful experience for the community and make really, really great beer. That's also obviously a huge passion of ours and so, over the past couple of years, from the inception, we've put together a team of people that are going to bring that vision to life. I am a brewer, although I don't think my skill set is quite up to par to accomplish what we're looking to accomplish. And so, we brought on a really great seasoned veteran. He's a gentleman that's actually local to Littleton, which kind of follows alongside of everything we're trying to do, is really trying to embrace the city itself. From the name, on the street, in the city, our brewer being a local as well, his name is Wayne Wannanen and he was one of the original brewers of Blue Moon and has since had many stints at really, really well-respected breweries throughout Denver and all the way down south, Castle Rock and you name it, he's been there. Ward-winning, and so we're hoping to build on that legacy and just continue on and build a great place for families. I'm a father of two kids and that was one of our favorite things to do on the weekends, was go to Breck Brew and have the kids run around in the grass while the parents have fun with their friends. And, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, well, thank you for being here. So have you or your father, or maybe anyone in your team, run restaurants before?
We have not. However, we are surrounded by a lot of, I, to go back a little bit, I grew up in Las Vegas and my wife worked in the industry, my brother was a very successful cocktail, part of a cocktail program out there and built menus. And one of my father's best friends is an executive chef on the strip. And so throughout the years, when we, when we wanted to kind of bring this, we really relied on a lot of our friends and family members that had been in these positions before, to, you know, just gain knowledge and kind of see, but, you know, you've got to start somewhere. And we figured, you know, this building is too ripe for it, the community wants it too bad. We would have never even taken the leap of faith if we didn't think that that was what people were looking forward to and the feedback's been amazing. And so, bluntly to answer your question, no, we don't. But, you know, at the core of what we're really trying to do, of making beer, we do have experience with that and we have experience enjoying beer, as I hope a lot of you guys will as well. But this is our first foray into it, yes.
So what steps do you think you're taking or what will you be taking to ensure that the laws of the state are being enforced?
Absolutely. I mean, when I first started this, you know, applying for this liquor license, the first thing I did was gather all the, you know, all the stuff available to me online, downloaded that right on my laptop, so I have it. It's a lot of pages, so I don't think I'm going to be memorizing it anytime soon, but it's there, you know, anytime I need to reference it. Like I mentioned, our head brewer has been a veteran of the, of, you know, this and he is my right-hand man. I mean, he's, I mean, we've known each other for two and a half years now and I spend so much time with him, he's almost become family. And so he has been a big driving factor in what we're doing, what we stand for, and also just keeping us on the up and up and making sure we're doing things by the book. And, you know, jumping in with both feet is, there's no better, there's no better education.
What sort of training are you doing for servers and-
So all of our servers will be required to be Cicerone Level 1 minimum? And then we'll encourage them and also pay for them to keep going through the steps. And then, we're really trying to, we're really going to try to encourage people with experience to come down and apply and hopefully bring them over because it's going to offer a better service to the customer as well as, you know, enable us to also learn from them as well, from their past experiences, serving in, you know, similar, similar facilities.
Thanks.
Can I just ask a couple of questions about the application? I'm just trying to get a sense, excuse me, on the first floor you have a bar and tasting room and it looks like that opens into an outdoor patio, is that accurate?
It does.
And you identify it as a bar slash tasting room? I assume that's because, I'll let you fill in that blank.
The indoor space?
Yes, the indoor space.
Yeah, so the indoor space is what we're calling our tasting room or bar. And then the outdoor space would be identified as more of a beer garden area?
Okay.
Kind of, you know, outdoor, beautiful outdoor space where families can kind of mingle and stuff like that. And then, you know, when the weather's bad, we'll close the garage doors, but obviously encouraging people to kind of move back and forth.
And does the outdoor patio have a bar area? Like a place where people can acquire-
No, it does not.
You have to go into the bar and tasting room?
Have to go into the tasting room.
And then on the second floor, the whole thing is rooftop, excuse me, a rooftop bar and patio and one, it appears that one wall, I guess, is where the bar is?
Correct.
And, and there isn't, say, a bar in the corner up at the front or anything like that?
Yep, we have, we have two locations on the whole property that you're able to order from and they're actually mirrored images of each other.
And will servers be circulating that you can order from a table? Everybody has to go to one of those two locations?
There'll be a queue to order, which will streamline things, I think, and it's been a proven way that a lot of breweries operate and, and I just think it's, it's the best thing to do.
I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not there's like an unsecured, not an unsecured bar area, but another bar area in the, in the two-
And that was also part of the reasoning behind that, was to kind of keep everything contained, right? So, carting is very easy to stay up on because you only have a handful of bartenders that are serving a beer at any given time and fewer, fewer hands handling the product.
And all the beers served on premises will be beer that's manufactured on the premises? And are you doing growlers for takeaway?
We will have a to-go beer fridge of canned beer. Again, all beer that's made on premise.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks for being here tonight and sharing everything and it's been exciting to see the building coming together. Driving by many times a day here in Littleton. I did have one question-
Probably feels like it's never going to end. I know, I feel that way.
I was just curious, with that building, sort of what the parking arrangements look like around the building?
Yeah, so obviously to get to the point we're at, we met all requirements. And it goes without saying, I mean, there's rules around parking, but to, we obviously don't want people driving to our brewery. I mean, the whole idea is, you make it hard for people to drive, they're going to find alternative methods, they're going to ride share, they're going to ride their bikes. I mean, we live in a huge, I mean, we're positioned central to a huge neighborhood and so, that's the whole idea. I mean, it's like, we're Littleton Brewing Company, we're catering to the neighbors. And the sentiment was, was, I mean, it was, they agreed for, you know, the neighbors agreed to it. And, you know, for any overflow parking, there's, you know, street parking, it's all public parking. And in the future, right across, if you look, you know, on Gallup, one of the things I would love to talk about, this is not the forum for it, I understand, but my plan in the future is, I do believe there needs to be a crosswalk right there. Not just for us, but for public safety. Every day, I watch people cross that to go to the coffee shop, back and forth, and it's dangerous. So I think that is a, would be a great solution to expand parking down a more industrial street rather than residential.
Thank you.
And may we have a presentation on the needs and desires of the neighborhood, please?
Do I sit down?
You're welcome to, if you'd like to.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm not as tall as him and I'm shrinking more every day, I think. Carol Johnson for Liquor Licensing Professionals, Doing Businesses Liquor Pros. We are a neutral petitioning company, we do not guarantee results. We try to start the closest to the neighborhood location for both businesses and residents if that is available. We carried the warning page stating the type of license we were petitioning for, all of the dates and pertinent information, the boundaries that the city gave. We had petitions for yes or no signatures and asked for people to contribute what their reasons were if, for both in support or in opposition. We did a total of 77 attempts at businesses, 314 at residents, for a total of 391 attempts. From that, we obtained 120 signatures. 113 were in support and seven were in opposition. The breakdown for that was, we had 40 business signatures, 38 in support and two in opposition. And we had 80 residential signatures, 75 in support and five in opposition. There were, of the seven, four people gave no reason for opposition. One was congestion and it was a child-friendly neighborhood, one was decrease of the quiet neighborhood, and one was concerned with child safety. There were 35 who declined to participate, 19 not interested, eight too busy, six do not sign petitions or surveys, and two businesses was against their corporate policy. We had 29 who were not qualified, 13 of which were businesses that did not have an owner or manager available, seven were under 21, five were non-residents, and four did not speak or read English sufficient to participate. and four did not speak or read English sufficient to participate. The three last reasons that are enfold on your statements may be considered invalid or irrelevant or irrelevant due to state statutes, uh, dealing with, uh, speculation and so, they can be considered, uh, as irrelevant, invalid reasons when you're counting that. And if we take that into consideration, that would give us the one hundred and thirteen, excuse me, in support for ninety-seven percent and four in opposition for three percent for the total of one hundred and seventeen. And I'd be more, more than glad to answer any questions. I think I'm starting to have spring allergies.
Does anyone have any questions?
This definitely shows there's a need and desire in the neighborhood for it, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any further questions or concerns?
I did have one more question for the applicant, if I could please, about food. Do you plan on serving food at this location, is there?
Yes, really good food.
So, you have a kitchen and?
We have a, yup, so we have, uh, if you have driven by, you may have noticed a little building kind of, uh, uh, off to the side and so, it'll be essentially like a permanent food truck if you think of it that way, so you'll actually go up to the window and order. Um, you'll, you'll be given a text, you know, when your food is ready, but we had a really beautiful, uh, wood burning pizza oven and we're just gonna churn out awesome pizzas. Yeah.
Very good. And the other question I had also is, um, about entertainment, it seems like the place is just so ripe for having bands up on the, on the upper level or?
Something I would very much love to have, um, that will be for later discussion, I believe with the, the powers to be, whether we can or cannot have live music. Uh, but absolutely, I mean, I, I would absolutely love that. We get requests, not only from the neighbors, but from bands, I can't even tell you how many, uh, every day are flooded in our social media inbox asking, hey, we'd love to play your grand opening, um, so, yes, we would love to do that one day.
Speaking of the grand opening, do you have a date in mind?
Oh, man, it's a tough one. Uh, we're telling people mid-May as of now, uh, with the wet, oh my gosh, the wet summer was brutal and then all the snow, when it melts, it just turns it into a mud pit and so, it just kinda, everything halts. Mid-May. Fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the staff? Great, can I call for a motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
A public, um.
Open for public comment, I apologize. It's my first rodeo. Any public comment? Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, please.
You have to state the time.
It's seven twenty-eight and we have public comment. Can I ask you to state your, oh, sorry. Can I ask you to state your name?
Yeah, it's Brienne Switzenberg.
Thank you.
Um, I was hoping for a little bit of clarification, cause I live across the street from the brewery and, um, when the petition came by, uh, for signatures, um, and it said just the liquor license, I, my question is, are they, are they applying just for the beer aspect or what a liquor license fully entails of hard liquor and growlers off the premises? So, I just wanted clarification on that, does anybody have?
I'm gonna look to staff to answer that, cause they?
You can finish your public comment and then they're both hearing you and so, they can readdress, um, your questions once you're done.
So, that my comments are not questions?
Once all of public comment is done, correct.
So, who will answer the question?
Either the applicant or staff, once all of public comment is done. They'll have an opportunity to readdress the authority on those questions.
Okay. Um, well, then I will rephrase that as a comment. Um, I will just voice my concerns being on the block. Um, we, obviously, I was one of the people that said it per the children and the congestion and we've been to every meeting through this whole process and we keep voicing our concerns on the parking, um, and the safety and the children on the street and the quietness of our neighborhood and every time there's been a comment about bands, um, we usually bring up noise ordinances, um, cause us neighbors are all aware of the codes at this point, we've had to be, so we are very thoroughly involved in what the parking codes are and what the noise codes are and the sound ordinances and all of that, so we are just here trying to gain as much information and continue to have our voices heard, even though on paper we are, um, minority of opinion, um, we still are very important and exist, cause we're right by the business. Um, and I wish for, in regards to traveling around and getting signatures, I wish the information that was presented to us was a full story. I had questions for the woman that was coming by with the, the signatures, as of to what this actually meant and she wasn't sure, um, what it meant, whether it's regarding beer, liquor, she didn't have any idea and I was a little bit disappointed that if it would be presented to us as a signature, that it wasn't, we weren't given all of the information while we were trying to assign it. And then also another part of this meeting is that it was the first time it wasn't completely made public, we usually got postcards in the mail for the whole upbringing, so I don't know the rules beyond that, but I wish that would've been made the same way, so that everybody was more aware and it wasn't something we had to dig to find. And then I will have my questions for after then.
Well, if you have, now you have an opportunity to address any concerns you have and then the applicant and staff will have an opportunity to readdress those concerns should they wish to, but you're not actually asking questions directly of either party right now, you can do that outside of the hearing if you wish, but they will have an opportunity to address what you raised during public comment.
Okay.
Does that work?
Sure. Thank you.
And I believe we have another member of the public who wants to make a comment, is that correct? Thank you. Would you mind stating your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is, uh, Paul Boam, I'm also one of those right down the street to houses off the alley from which this will be built and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, to make comments. My, my primary concern, um, is, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, uh, uh, the liquor license, I had some confusion as, uh, Brienne did, um, whether this was discussing selling beer only or if it was gonna be hard liquor as well. It was led to believe that beer was already automatically approved and that it was just on hard liquor, but, uh, Forest Hill, uh, is a residential street and it's right across the street from the Ballet Center and I come out all the time and I see little dancing princesses running to the car and it is of concern to me to have an alcoholic source, that close to, uh, where kids are. And, and I'm not an expert in what, uh, what happens at, uh, breweries, um, but, uh, I, I have to feel that people that have dropped in for a cocktail or two, if it's not just for beer and a, and a pizza, um, may not be paying attention to what's in the street. I see the example of, uh, Cherry Cricket and those streets are bumper to bumper and kids getting into cars, I, I see as a very risky thing, um, and so, that's a very large concern to me. To hear that people want to walk there seems good, but Cherry Cricket doesn't look like it's a neighborhood draw with no cars, they're parked two blocks to the north, uh, along that residential street, um, and so, that is of concern to me, but, uh, the safety issue. Hadn't heard about putting a band up on top, uh, that's a concern to me, we have grandkids that sleep at our house and having a band playing at ten o'clock at night, um, the sound mitigation's gonna be really hard, we hear bands that are going off in the park, during the summer and, uh, that really does destroy the quiet neighborhood that, uh, that we've enjoyed for forty-five years. I would appreciate you give consideration to safety and, uh, the degrading of the street next to it, the survey to get a hundred positives, I think that's a great idea, but that's people that aren't going to be sleeping right under a, uh, a rooftop, we can hear the workers talking now and, uh, a band is going to be amplifying that.
That is time.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does the applicant want an opportunity to readdress?
I wouldn't actually just.
Oh, hold on, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I would ask, even if they didn't sign up, if there's anyone else.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Pam?
Patience, we have new chair and everything tonight, guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm Pam Chaborn, live blog and I have from here, so, um, I'm really concerned about Littleton Boulevard and having heard the neighbors, I really appreciate they're coming here to talk about it. I know that that isn't anything you folks can do, you're here about the liquor license and that's all. So, I'm gonna say for the record that the other concerns are important to the city as well and as a public service, I'd like them to know that the Historic Preservation Board meets next Monday, the fifteenth, and the Planning Commission, who our gripe is really with, meets, uh, April twenty-second. And please come to public comment and talk to them about their poor, um, management of Littleton Boulevard, which is about to get worse because of a claim that economic development, um, requires that Littleton Boulevard be redeveloped, um, for all sorts of other purposes. I think it's poorly conceived and poorly planned, I'm not gonna say I think, I, it is my assessment, cause I've listened to all of this, that it is poorly conceived, poorly planned, a disaster for, um, Littleton potentially, so Historic Preservation on Littleton Boulevard is more important and, uh, I'd like the neighborhood to know that there is another forum and, uh, that's where these concerns have to be expressed and resolved and stopped, honestly. So, um, yeah, and I'm really concerned there's not enough parking, but anyway, I would just like for the record that, uh, although their concerns are not directly about the license, liquor license, um, those are concerns for the city and they should've been heard, um, notice there's no planners here and no planners involved, so, um, thanks very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, would the applicant like an, oh, staff?
Close the public hearing?
Like to close the public, uh, public, comment period at seven thirty-seven?
Thank you.
Yes, you can, it may be questions that staff can address and/or the applicant, but given what was raised during public comment, they do have an opportunity to readdress you.
And would the applicant like the opportunity to readdress? Please join us. Would you mind stating your name again for the record?
Yes, Troy Beer with Littleton Brewing Company.
Thank you.
Uh, so, just a few things, a- as far as the band goes, um, I don't have a plan of having a band, I was asked it, about it and I said that might be a nice thing in the future if, if that's something that's possible to do. Uh, our intent is to always follow the rules, we, we wouldn't have gotten to this point without following the rules and that goes for parking as well. And so, we are absolutely hearing you and we are gonna do our very best to be the best neighbors we can be. And I, I don't think you're gonna be, uh, happy about it all the time, but I'm here, if you ever need to ask me questions or voice concerns, um, I'm happy to talk to you. But I hope that answers some of it and then, as far as the, um, the growlers, you made a comment about growlers, we will not be having growlers, we will have to-go beers, the same as any grocery store, liquor store, uh, it's no different. And, uh, and then about the ballet studio, I, I'm not sure if you know, but we have parking agreements with both Banning Foundation and the Ballet Studio, they are two biggest advocates of the neighborhood, so if they're not concerned, I, I'm, I, I think that's a pretty strong indicator about what parents think with young, young children, um, and myself as well as being a father of two children, so, I hope that answered some of the questions.
Just, I think the, the other question was what type of license? Beer or beer and hard liquor?
So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, you, you can a- answer it, we need to hear you in the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want me to answer it, yeah?
Yeah, just answer the question.
Yeah, so, um, we had an option to do either, you know, a typical beer, beer license, I think beer and wine license, but we also had the option to do a liquor license as well and we just thought it wa- it was smart, um, right out the gate just to have that option. Um, that doesn't mean that's our intent, it just gives us the option to sell liquor in the future, if that's what the customer, uh, decides that's what they would like to see.
Oh, sorry, so your initial intent is to sell, sell beer only, it's meant to be a brewery, so only beer?
Correct, correct.
You have no plans right now to sell lic- hard liquor?
No, we do not.
Okay.
The license that he applied for is called a brew pub license and fifteen percent of the sales have to come from food. Um, he is able to sell other alcohols, but when we spoke, it sounded like they were gonna do just beer to start.
Yes, that's correct. And sorry about, sorry about the mic, it, I keep trying to get it up and it won't stay up. So, I hear you on the mic issue.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask you another question? Um, I forgot to ask earlier, what are your operating hours?
So, those are TBD, TBD, um, that's, that's kind of a tough thing, it's, it's, uh, when we get a little bit closer, we're gonna be doing some soft openings, um, with, with, uh, you know, friends and family first and of course, they can't be the voice, cause they're pretty biased, right? And so, then we'll be inviting in people from the community that are, have a more, um, you know, better take on exactly what it is they'd like to see, what they'd like to see changed and at that time, we will start hearing people out about what they kind of visualize these hours being. And, you know, I mean, w- we're not trying to be anything different than the average brewery you see all over Colorado, I mean, they have pretty reasonable hours, um, and we really are family-friendly, it's not just a buzz, buzz statement, it's, we mean it, uh, we hope everybody with family comes and so, those hours are not gonna be very late, a- at least we don't anticipate.
Can you give us an estimate on the hours, will you be open during the day?
Yes, so if I had to, if I had to do my best guess, it would be probably along the lines of a ten AM to probably ten PM.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I am absolutely willing to hear from her on public comment, thank you.
No, they probably do not have the map that, of where we surveyed, but the majority of the residents were surveyed on the north side of Littleton Boulevard between Windermere and a lot, and, uh, Latte Street, the majority of the residents, uh, that we approached were closest to the neighborhood as we always do, there were three small areas south of Littleton Boulevard that were also incorporated and, uh, in that area as well, but, um, that's one of the things we always try to do because, uh, starting the closest with any license, because that's where the neighborhoods, businesses and residents are, have the most concern. I was gonna reiterate that, the brew pub licenses, but she did go ahead and explain that, uh, as far as the notifications, the building was posted with the sign that all liquor licenses are always posted with and it was published in the paper as always, so that was, there's always a notification for every liquor license in the state of Colorado, it's published with, in advance of the hearing and also the, the paper posting on the window, so.
And the businesses that you interviewed or that you solicited, um, were they on the north side of Littleton Boulevard?
On both sides of.
Oh, both sides.
The businesses basically were Windermere, um, also to, um, a little beyond that latte.
Thank you.
You should, you don't have a copy of the map?
I do have a copy of the application, I'm zooming, is it?
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Thank you.
So, one of the comments we received was about the individual collecting the signatures may not have quite understood what was the liquor license or the nature of what they were collecting for, could you address that?
I'm not sure who did the petition, so as far as a brew pub, brew pub license covers a lot of things and they may not have, and they may know what the brew pub license is, but not what the individual person is going to do. A brew pub license is something, when the breweries first started in Colorado, breweries could only sell or serve what they manufactured. Many of those, most all of the breweries today have converted to brew pub licenses because sometimes there are people that don't drink beer and they like to have a gl- their wife might like a glass of wine, so a brew pub license enables the license holder to provide other beers than the, what they manufacture and other products. Many of them also have soft drinks available, you know, along with it, with the food, because everyone isn't a beer drinker, so a brew pub license covers that whole gamut of things, but they may not have known what this specific individual in this brewery was going to do.
Right, but the person gathering the signature would be able to say it's a brew pub license?
Yes, it's right on the paperwork.
It's on the paperwork?
It's right on the very first page of the paperwork, it says what type of license it is.
Understood, alright, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. I'm now going to call for a motion. Is that, going to call for a motion if we have one?
I move to approve LC Resolution 02-2024, which grants Littleton Brewing Company LLC DBA, Littleton Brewing Company, 1201 West Littleton Boulevard, Littleton, Colorado, 80120, a brew pub liquor license approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by the petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise, and all the other reasonable restrictions that or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion.
I'll just make a brief comment.
Please.
I'm in favor of this license, but I do have a little more pause than usual. I think most are generally very clear, very cut and dry. I think with the proximity to the neighborhood, it just presents little additional consideration for me. But I think overall, based on where we're at, where the building is at and everything, based on the parameters we have on reviewing licenses, I mean, I'm still in favor of approving this. But I think there could be, you know, future considerations on, you know, timing and when things are presented and how that all unfolds. But feel a little more sensitive on this one. Sorry.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by a thumbs up, please.
For in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you. I'm now going to call for LC Resolution 03-2024, approving a liquor license application for Bar Box Aspen Grove LLC, DBA Bar Box at Aspen Grove, 7301 South Santa Fe Drive, number 860, Littleton, Colorado, 80120. Is the applicant present? Thank you. Would you mind raising your right hand and stating your name for the record?
Brad Lewis.
Robert Warren.
And it is 7:47 p.m. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give before this authority is truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Would you like to present?
Sure. So I don't know how familiar you guys are with Aspen Grove Shopping Center, but there's a, Aspen Grove built a beer garden there. I'm actually not sure when, but for the past year, Breckenridge Brewery ran it. And it's in the space right next to the Alamo Drafthouse. And so Breckenridge Brewery ran it under some license of theirs as a brew pub, I guess. And I run an event company and do various activations, farmers' markets kind of stuff. And in the course of that, Trey is a business partner in, we've done a beer garden in the tech center and have had great success there. And so have had communications with Aspen Grove. And they reached out about looking for a new partner to operate their beer garden. Particularly, they were looking for somebody that might bring a little more energy that Breckenridge wasn't bringing, as well as expand the menu. Breckenridge was doing only Breckenridge beer. And since we've had some history in that and they liked what we've done and were interested in us taking that on. And so through conversations with them, you know, came to an agreement to take over the operations of that. And that's our plan. And we're trying to get a new license and get things up and rolling.
So you have an agreement right now, a signed agreement? Was that in our packet for operations? So you did come to agreement with them on running?
Correct. Yeah, we have a lease.
You have a lease. Perfect. And obviously, you've run these beer gardens before. Have you been cited for any violations of liquor laws at your other locations?
No.
And in terms of similar to what I mentioned to the other applicant, what about training or other ways to ensure? How are you ensuring you're meeting the liquor laws of the state?
Yep. Yeah, we have a bar manager who has been working on the beer garden and the tech center who will be overseeing this as well, who has, I don't know, 10 or 15 plus years in the industry. We require all server bartenders to do a tips training.
Right. And you'll do more than beer? You're going to do a number of different alcohols?
Correct. We love beer, wine, probably canned cocktails. We don't intend to do any, I mean, it's, if you've been there.
Yeah, it's right across the highway from my house.
Yeah, great. So it's out of a shipping container. You know, there's no dishwasher and all that kind of stuff. So it'll just be canned and draft drinks. But there are canned cocktails out there that we intend to have as an option.
Right. And general operating hours?
Right now, we're planning to open Thursdays through Sundays. Last year, it was open Friday through Sundays, so we're adding Thursday. Thursday and Friday is opening at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock kind of timeframe till 9:00, maybe 10:00. And Saturday is opening at noon until 9:00 or 10:00. And Sunday is opening noon until probably 7:00 or 8:00.
Got it. Thanks.
I note on the map, I was provided that there's food truck parking. I assume you're trying to contract with food trucks to provide food on premises?
Yes. Yeah, the plan is to have a food truck during all operating hours.
Excellent. And then I had one more question, and it slipped, but it's going to come back. I can feel it.
I'll still be here.
And will all of the alcohol be stored there on premises?
Yes, yeah.
And what kind of security is there after hours?
It'll all be in the shipping container that is metal blocks. You know, there's no windows to even break. I mean, it's all in a shipping container.
Great. And it looks like, are those PortaJohn facilities?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so there's no bathrooms on site. So we'll be bringing in porta potty bathrooms for patrons to use.
And then is there any monitoring to keep alcohol within the certain premises? Or are people going to be able to?
The space is fenced in.
Gotcha.
There are two, actually, I think there's three entrances or three. There'll be an exit to the little bathroom area, yeah. And there's one kind of both directions to the parking lot, which will have no alcohol beyond this point signs.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do folks come over from Alamo and are able to bring their drink from the Alamo to your space? Or is there no crossover?
No crossover.
Thank you. One more question. Will you have servers circulating within the green space? Or does everyone come to the shipping container to acquire their beverage? Or acquire food?
Yeah, the plan is for everybody to come to the shipping container.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thanks. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Did you do the needs and desires yourself, or do you have somebody do it for you?
I had somebody do it, yeah.
Oh, okay. Any information, and I'm just going through here, that you could share during that process?
Sure. Yeah, he, I told him he spent 16 hours doing it. He went, I think, to, I have those numbers that are on there, 432 attempts, 345 were not at home. I know he went to some businesses in Aspen Grove and then obviously a bunch of residences. I'm not sure what that breakdown was. He had zero oppositions, seven people that, I guess, desired not to sign without explanation. He had 87 signatures in favor. Yeah.
Yeah, I see that. So, yeah, we had no signatures in opposition.
Correct. Yeah, I'm unaware of any opposition.
Thanks.
I'm not sure if we can ask staff, but kind of concerning that needs and desires, it seemed like a high percentage of signatures were rejected. Is there any insight into that?
If there's specific instructions, they have to put their name, a signature, their address, and their age. And if they don't put all four of those items, then that signature cannot be counted. So, because I go through and make sure they're in Littleton and of age and whatever. And so there was several that we had to not consider because they weren't, they didn't fill out all four portions.
Thank you.
Which, just one comment on that. Because I talked to him about that after the fact. Obviously, we didn't know that or realize that at the time. But I think it's 50 some of those were, just didn't put their age and five or 10 maybe didn't put an address. But he verified that everybody that did sign was over 21.
Thank you.
Wendy, can I just ask a clarification? It says that you have a total of 22 valid signatures. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Out of the 87, we had to disregard 65.
Okay.
And again, that's, I think, like 50 some of those were just, everything was correct. People just didn't put their age on the form. And then the other 10, people didn't put a full address. 10-ish. I'm not exactly sure on those numbers.
Can you, I can see the picture of the fence on the diagram, but what kind of fence is that exactly?
It's a split rail.
Okay. Four foot, two rail or something, just a regular?
Yeah.
And I think if I remember right, there's probably signs that say no alcohol. And in your current beer garden you have in the tech center, do you have a similar setup there where it's sort of like a two-rail fence? And so this would be very similar to what you've already managed?
Exactly, yes.
I see.
Very similar.
Okay.
The one in the tech center has a shipping container, in fact, with, it's a little different in that there's taps off the side. And so there's actually a bar on the outside of the container. The one at Aspen Grove is all contained inside the container with windows that open up. So bartenders are serving out of the container. But, yeah, the beer garden that we currently operate is completely outdoors, same kind of setup, fenced in.
And I'm sorry, how many years have you operated that particular beer garden?
Two.
Two years. And then before that, what's your background in liquor and service beyond, prior to that two-year timeframe?
For me, I've been in the event industry. So I've done special event licenses for, I've been doing that for nine years.
All right.
No prior experience with liquor licenses before that.
Understood.
Oh, we had a golf clubhouse liquor license years ago.
Yeah.
15, 20 years, but gave that up maybe a decade ago.
Understood. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public comment if you'd like to take a seat. State the time. 7:58 p.m. Is there any public comment? Pam, would you like to speak? Would you mind stating your name for the record when you get to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Pam Chapornel of Block and I Have From Here. So I am sorry I missed the presentation. I was curious to hear it. But I, you know, I don't like personal comments that don't relate to the city. But boy, I do not like containers as a place. One was proposed for downtown behind the post office, and I don't think they fit at all. Maybe Aspen Grove is different. But I just don't like what's conveyed with containers, especially with liquor. I mean, both ways. There's a time in America where this would have been regarded as really kind of belonging to a different part of town. And so that's a concern I have. And there's, I don't think anything you folks can do about it. Just am seeing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no further comments, I'm going to close the public comment period at 7:59 p.m. Are there any questions for the staff or the applicant? Seeing no further questions, going to call for a motion.
I move to approve LC Resolution 03-2024, which grants for Bar Box Aspen Grove LLC, DBA Bar Box at Aspen Grove, 7301 South Santa Fe Drive, number 860, Littleton, Colorado, 80120, a tavern liquor license approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise, and all other reasonable restrictions that are or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So, yeah, I mean, I'm going to vote for this motion or I'm in favor of the motion. I will say, if this was the last one and we only got 22 signatures valid, I mean, I think part of it is where it's being located right now. I mean, it is an existing bar, right? And there is some residents, they're ways away. But certainly, I just think that we did demonstrate the needs and the desires, but it probably needs, it would need a higher lift if it was in a different location. And I know that may be a little unfair. But we've seen that in other petitions where they've been low. So obviously, in this case, it was a technical error. And I don't seem like we have to send it back. But definitely, it definitely perked our interest when we saw 65 were rejected. But anyways, that would be my only comment for what it's worth.
Thank you. Going to call for a vote on the motion as it sits at the table. Can you please indicate your approval or disapproval of the motion by indicating with a thumbs up, please?
For in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Wendy, do we have any reports from you or Ashley?
We have no applicants for next month. So unless there's some issue that comes up, we probably won't have a meeting. But I will contact you via email and let you know.
Perfect. Commission members, do we have any reports?
I will not be here on the 10th. Obviously, that's a couple of months, but I thought I would note it for the record.
The 10th of May?
July. Sorry. Sorry. I should have spent the month.
Every time.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. It is in 2024.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's my birthday. I'm definitely not coming here for my birthday. I'll be appropriately consuming liquor.
Thank you for the detail. The public thanks you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else like to regale us with their summer plans? Thank you. With no further business, I adjourn the meeting at 8:03 p.m. Thank you all for your time.